Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Back from there. Back from Tom's phone there in this direction so we may see why everybody else is here today. Let's start with the approval of the minutes of the May the 16th, 2017 regular meeting. Mr. Wilkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Smith. Oh, yes?
Yes.
All right. No one has signed in to speak this afternoon, doesn't look like. So let's go to the public hearing. This is the time for the 2017-18 proposed budget public hearing. And as everybody knows, I think now, there should be several comments of the proposed budget there for anyone to look at. And if anyone has any questions or comments or wants to address that, now is the time to do it. So the floor is now open for any comments or direct proposed budget.
I don't want to be at once.
Do you have? Okay, if not.
I can do it now or later, it don't matter.
Well, let's just tie it all together, that's what I'm gonna do, since there's not any other comments, let's let Mr. Ellis address what he wants to say in case that might result in somebody having some comments or questions. Mr. Ellis.
Okay, I tried to keep this short and sweet because this was a huge task, this budget is probably the hardest thing that I've done. And now looking back on it, excuse me, looking back on it, I can see the whole picture, next year it's gonna be, you know, half the time. But I didn't get the whole picture until about two weeks ago today. And unfortunately, I was working on it about a month and a half before that, so you can see.
As long as you've gotten pictures.
I got a picture and I got zeros at the end of the budget, which means it balances, so all's good, I hope. I don't wanna go through this line by line, it would be kinda ridiculous to do that, and boring, and it would take hours, and without the federal programs anyways, we don't really know exactly how much we're gonna get. So I don't have all the budget line items in there, I just have the revenue amounts that we assume we're gonna get. It would be impossible to do that, so. First off, I wanna say that throughout the course of this process, with me learning how to do this, I talked to Amy Willard at the Department of Ed, San Pauli Department of Ed. I had numerous phone calls into John Brennan, who was, as Trish says, he's a kinder, gentler John Brennan, and I think it's coming to fruition, that he offered a lot of assistance. He would even call and make sure I'd done certain things by certain times, so I thought that was really good. And Jeff Davis and Amy Downey, Jeff's with Tyler County and Amy is with Rome County. And they were the kind of, the people who I kinda went to whenever I had a question, and they would assist in however they could. But they'd been doing it a long time, so I knew that if I was doing what they were doing, I was in good shape. The way I wrote the presentation down, it's just Fund 11, Fund 61, those are the general revenue fund and the special projects fund. And we'll start with Fund 11. And while I'm going over this, just ask any questions, it'd work better if you just ask as we go through it, and then we'll try to cover everything. The county regular expense levy revenue is budgeted at $2.8 million. That, the amount that is expected to receive annually is closer to $2.95 million. West Virginia Department of Ed, they're using the state aid formula, makes up about 90% of that gap that we're gonna have this year, so I think it amounts to around $105,000 that we'll receive in addition to what our regular expense levies will be bringing in. The excess levy is something that we went over during the course of the year, we've talked about it numerous times, what's happened in Boone County, we kinda kept an eye on that, I've tried to let you know where we're at. And I think we're gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of about 94% to 96%, maybe even higher, of getting what was budgeted last year. So we're not gonna get any more big checks, but we're gonna be close to that number. So it's gonna be a little bit lower, but not bad. Terrible now. With what you approved a couple of weeks ago in the levy call, we're gonna get $3,420,000 this year. That's down 140, almost $141,000 from what the original levy call was supposed to be. Now, if you look at the sheet that's attached on the very back of this, the little handout, Mr. McGiff and I had had a conversation of where we wanted to take that $140,000 front, and we agreed that it would be better to take that from projects that wouldn't affect their people's everyday lives. We wouldn't take it from retiree pensioner, or something that affects this. It's on the last sheet, it's colored, it's got green.
Right here.
Yeah, the last sheet of that. And again, this is something we went over before, you've seen this before, maybe not as colorful. There you go. And that's, well, you didn't receive that, did you?
I got it.
Okay.
No.
There it is.
That's fine.
The amount on the original levy call was supposed to be a public library, it's supposed to be $108,900. But according to Senate Bill 20, if we don't receive all of the levy, we can reduce that amount by a certain percentage, and that's what we've done. The retiree pension and dental vision, I'm gonna have to put about another $30,000 in it this year to cover those costs. So I went ahead, we have to increase that budget next year, 'cause we have to assume something similar is gonna happen. Then you go down to the end with the major improvements, we're gonna reduce that down to $83,593 from $200,000. So that's where most of that reductions were gonna come from. And then professional development, we just took that whole amount, because we haven't spent that money over the last couple of years. I think this year we spent about $900, and that could've been miscoding, I'm not real sure. But it's just not used, so it wasn't a big deal to take that $50,000. But the annual totals that you see in the green column is what I budgeted for the amounts from our excess levy to go into, with these amounts into these projects.
Greg, I have a question about that. What would happen, seeing as there's another month potentially for taxes to be paid, right? Should revenue increase to a point where you could possibly fill in some of these gaps? Have they discussed that with you, and you talk them?
Well, I mean, anything we get at the end of this month, next month, and end of July, is gonna go into fiscal year 17 revenue numbers. Understand what I'm saying? So anything we're seeing?
This for fiscal?
This is looking forward to next year.
Okay. But aren't all taxes that come through June the 30th a part of the current year?
Yes. And then they'll be divvying out the money from June into July, that's why we count it into June.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, what if there was, the optimistic thing, a lot of taxes paid in June, which would increase the amount of 2017?
Well, then all we would do is hit our budgeted amount, is what was likely to happen. And it won't have any bearing on going forward into next year.
You can't carry that over.
Well, I mean, that would go into your carryover. If you've got extra revenue and you're not expensing it, then that's part of what your carryover would be.
That's where I'm getting to my question here, is if that were to occur, and you had added the carryover and surpassed what's shown here, would you not go back and fill in some?
Yeah, we could go back and I could put revenue in wherever I need to put it in.
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, if we get, you know, extra money, we could always fill in that gap on the major improvements.
Well, one in particular, I mean, Oliver, important, but professional development, you know, from everything we hear, federal-wise, I don't know if we're gonna get a lot of assistance, Kirk might give us that report. At the state level, the way things are going, you know, I don't even know who's in charge of professional development, the State Department anymore, I don't know anybody there, if they have money to do it. But it's possible that that might be an error, we might have to have money.
Well, with what I've seen in expenditures over the last couple of years.
Well, Mr. King and I, we look at the federal programs almost, I guess, on a weekly basis, but we feel pretty good right now that we'll have some carryover money for next year for the purpose of providing professional development. So I don't think this hurts us moving into next year. After next year, you know, we may have an issue with some cash.
They also have the staff development fund that we have that has about $30,000.
Yeah, it's about $30,000. We take, it carries over from year to year, and we don't use that when we have federal money, which we lose if we don't use, so we've been making that also.
So that money may not be there.
Yeah. Kind of, we don't have the right.
Hopefully, at least for another year, we may be okay.
Right.
And I don't know why.
But speaking of, you know, jumping ahead a little bit, but speaking of the federal programs like Title II, I was given direction that those were gonna be cut by 10%, so I'm budgeted at 90% of what we had this year. So with 10% cut, we're gonna budget it 90%. I talked to Kirk today. Kirk has more information, like, maybe some of those were gonna be cut a little bit more, and some of them around 10%. So what we'll have to do is go in in July and just adjust those numbers what you think will come in. The budget's basic state aid formula for next year is gonna be $17,000,000, $382,000. This is down by $200,000 from this year, from 17. That doesn't include the amounts for like buses and the professional development, the service development. That's part of the state aid formula too, but you have to put that over into Fund 61. So you really get, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of, it's close to a million dollars, because the real number's like 18-2, 18-3, that you get in the state aid formula, but only $17,000,000, $382,000 goes into the general expense fund. And then you have to pull out from the 18 million, the buses, which is like $343,000, and a few other things that I put in 61. Overall, in Fund 11, the budgeted unrestricted projects revenue is up in this budget that I prepared. And it's real deceiving, because a lot of that is not real money. And I know it's probably the last thing you wanna hear me say, is it's not real money. But OPEB had a lot to do with that. Our OPEB expense this year is around $3.1 million, is what we put into the budget. And just about two weeks ago, I made a journal entry to get rid of that $3.1 million. It's just a revenue number, and we expensed it. So we went from $3.1 million to almost $4 million that I had to put in as revenue. And I had to put an equal expense, I separated it out from the different projects. So sometime next year, I'm gonna take that $4 million away. So it made our revenue numbers look like they went up, when in actuality, they went down. But that kinda, that's why I say it's not real money, because it doesn't affect this one bit. It just, it's like a debt, so. And I had that conversation with another treasurer, it's kinda ridiculous to even have us put that in there and show that as a revenue and an expense, when it's not really our money. I mean, the state's saying, I think it's called a two and four transaction.
Bertie's talked to us about that in the past.
Yeah, just, this first year, I've always heard John Brennan gripe about it for the past several years. And now I see why he's griping, he just doesn't look right. It's a complete wash, there's no, there's nothing in it for us, really. Going down to Fund 61, any questions about Fund 11? It's kinda, to balance the budget, I had to go back into transportation and to maintenance, and cut a little bit here and there. I know Greg probably don't wanna hear that, it's not gonna affect anything. If we get it, if we get to a, if we get, I was glad Rod wasn't here. If we get to a point where they need more money, we're gonna have, I think, money in reserve, put wherever they need it.
Is Fund 11 letting, or the excess levy?
Yes, it's there.
Okay, I mean, is that what Fund 11?
Fund 11 is state aid and our regular levy, our excess levy.
It's more than that.
Those are the unrestricted projects. And then you get into restricted projects like, the excess levy comes into the general unrestricted revenues, but then I have to make a journal entry to move it over into the levy projects. And then they become restricted. You know, when you assign these numbers, salary supplements, the libraries, you know, student activities, those become restricted. So we get to the $3.4 million, but I had to do a transfer, an intra-fund, intra-fund transfer to these other projects to show them. And that took me about a day to figure out. It's like, it makes no sense. It looked like I was double divvying from the excess levy. But it worked out pretty smoothly, once I figured out how it worked. Fund 61, the amount that's budgeted right now on the revenue side is $7,549,000. This will probably increase as we know what more of our federal monies are gonna be. We kinda figured what Title I, Title II, and Title V are gonna be. Special Ed I budgeted right around 100%, because I was given direction from Amy Willard at the Department of Ed, that special ed probably would be affected. She sent out an email this morning, and I have not read it, but it's about special ed. So, and it's probably got the amounts that's gonna be allocated to us. So when July 1 comes around, I'll have to make sure, I'll have to increase or decrease the budget based on what she gives us. We kinda hit on this earlier, we've been informed by the Department of Ed that many federal programs are being reduced for the coming year. And at the time I wrote this, which was late last night, all I, I knew the Title I, Title II, I'd heard Title V is gonna be reduced 10%. And Kirk's got other information, it might be a little bit more. And what was it you said?
17% is what we're looking at in Title II. Title V and I, we're looking at 10%.
Did you originate early or think the budget would be 10?
No, I was, I was under the impression that Title II was gonna go away completely. That was the scary rumor. So for us to have 17%, that's great news.
Yeah, I went down to Hall, told Kirk, said I heard it's gonna be 10%, he was happy, so. These are only estimated amounts, for us, you know, until they give us the final numbers, we won't know what those programs are really gonna be, till we get those grants in here, and at that time, we'll just adjust the budget. The program sets a special ed, some of the vocational school programs, like Carl Perkins, I budgeted 100%, because that's what I was told was gonna happen, just as I mentioned with special ed earlier. There's some programs, like 21st Century, I didn't know. I wasn't given any direction on what was gonna come in from the federal side. So I didn't know how to budget that. So what I did was, when we carried over the salaries from last year for the people we were gonna employ, when we carried those over from 17 to 18, there was a certain amount of sal, well, it was just salaries that came over. So I put a matching revenue to match those payroll costs. Now, if we hear that, you know, it's gonna be, you know, $210,000 for 21st Century, we'll just increase that revenue number and get a budget from Ron, and then we'll put in the budget.
There should be another 10% cut for 21st Century, so it's going to go where we had $168,000, if I remember, it's gonna go down to $154,000.
But I had to go by what we knew at the time, whenever I was doing that budget, so. And I didn't know what that was gonna be, so I just budgeted payroll. That's why I'm saying, the amount budgeted for Fund 61 is likely gonna go up. It'll have to go up, if these programs continue to exist, which I'm sure they will. Child nutrition changed just a few hundred dollars whenever I did that budget, and there were some templates, and Angie worked with me on that, filled in some blanks, and then we come out with somewhere $2.9 million. It might just be off $20,000, depending on the shit. And that's, that's the typo I had, and this is Kirk's fault, 'cause I had him proofread this this morning. Said, "The budget for child nutrition is nearly the, and should be the same as last year," so.
I was thinking about a cupcake.
So, I said, "Read this, see if it sounds okay, is there any error?" Like I said before, most of Fund 61 projects, especially federal projects, I only budgeted the salary. Let's say if we had a million dollars for, I think it's a million, $7,000 for part of special ed. What I did with that, because I didn't wanna budget out everything until we know what we're gonna get. We may get less, we may get more, I doubt more, but we may get less. I took the salaries, and those are budgeted in the expense side of the budget. Everything else, I put into a reserve account until we can get final numbers. So that whole amount is budgeted on the revenue side, but on the expense side, it's payroll and a reserve account. I didn't split it out for general supplies and travel and all that, 'cause it would've just been a complete shot in the dark, we just wouldn't know. And once those numbers are finalized, I'll have Ricky will give me budgets, Kirk will give me budgets, everybody will give me their budgets, and then in July, we'll make those changes. So, and one thing that that does, whenever I put, when I only budget the salaries and then put everything else into reserve, whenever you look at, if you look in the yellow sheet, the yellow booklet, I think, I tried to show you the different object codes, it's the budget balance, I think it's page four, five and six. If you look at some of those numbers, they'll say employee staff development, other professional services, technical services, repairs, those all have zeros, and they had money in them last year. Bertie went ahead and budgeted out everything she thought she was getting. Those are zero, only because the reserve accounts on the next page are so high. So I didn't want you to think that I forgot about those object codes and those specific, like textbooks, books, equipment, those are all a zero, and whenever we put the budgets in, those numbers will fill in. I think that's about it that I was wanting to go over. The budget is pretty much the same as it was last year, with a few changes, like where I'm, when I had to balance it, I had to go through, I had to cut a few things, nothing drastic. The only thing drastic that we did was due to the excess levy, because we had to cut a few of those projects. But there's not a huge difference, and I created hardship on myself early on in this process. Like, I think I told you before, it was 30 or 40 steps to get this to where you can start manipulating the numbers, and one of those steps says, "Do you wanna carry over the current year budget?" Well, I listened to some people who had a lot of years of experience, and they said, "No, don't do that, just input that." That is a big mistake, because most of this was data entry, and just trying to plug those numbers. So next year, I'll probably carry over this budget and then manipulate it to where I need it to be balanced. But this was, this was one of the largest tasks I've ever taken on, I have learned so much. But it's a big picture, once you get that big picture, you know, things get a little bit clearer. So, and manipulating WIVS to get from HMS to EMS to FMS, that was, that was the tough part, well, one of the tough parts. Understanding WIVS up to those last few steps was kinda difficult, then the last few steps, it got really easy. It's just, you know, you keep using the same module, the same line, just all the time to add and subtract, and, but it was a learning experience. Any more questions?
If I have anything else to add, maybe? Okay, now, when, this is a proposed budget, now, when will the budget be approved?
What happens, when I leave here, I'm gonna go down and I'm gonna do two steps on WIVS, and it's gonna kick it to the Department of Ed, as long as you approve it. And they're gonna download everything tomorrow, and over the first couple of weeks of June, they're gonna go through and they're gonna look at it, and they're gonna make their comments. I don't like this part of it, because when they send out their comments, they have like A through M, and then N through Z, N through Z, of all the counts, they split them up into two files, and they send out your budget with comments on it. And I said, "That's not fair." I said, "Does anybody nail this their first time?" And they said, "No, nobody nails it their first time." So I asked, I said, "Well, what are you looking for?" And Sam had sent me an email, and he said, "We're looking for this, 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 and this. If you don't have these things, or if you make major changes to these things, we're gonna write a comment." So what I did after I was done, after I balanced, I sent him an email and explained everything that, that I thought he would comment on, and why I did it. Like, we talked earlier about the fuel. I cut fuel because we're just not gonna meet that this year, we're gonna have money left over in our fuel line item. So I cut that by $30,000, just to handle it. And again, we may need that, maybe gas prices go back up and want to put money back in there. But I tried to let him know everything. I explained the carryover amount of 1.1 million. They didn't like that, but I put $200,000 in the reserve account, so that makes that 1.1 million actually look like $900,000, because I'd already put it over here, so to reduce that carryover amount. We have, you know, we're gonna have money left over from last year from that carryover that I can use, so. I'm not worried about it, but they just look at the number. So I'm not sure how they're gonna take that, I've already explained it to them a little bit. But I'm sure that I'm gonna have to try to project what our carryover's gonna be to get them. What'll happen, if they don't like that, that carryover, they're gonna make me go in and change some more line items in Fund 11. And that's not something I wanna do.
So, if the Department of Education approves this budget, we no longer have to deal with it, are we finished with it?
Once you vote on it today, you're finished with it. Any changes that have to be made, we don't have to get board approval.
So it just now requires the State Department to approve that, right?
Yeah. And I was told just to go ahead and to make it the live file today for July 1, and any changes I have to make from the Department of Ed, if any, I'll make it in that live file come July. Or I guess I could do it in June.
I was just trying to clarify the term proposed budget, that just means?
Yeah, today, if you vote on this, it becomes the approved budget.
It's really final for us, pending the State Department approval.
Yeah, then it goes into an approved budget, and then it goes from approved to adopted.
Okay. Well, I have a question then, it kind of ties in several things you've said, that you're concerned that the amount of the carryover, which is in some ways inflated, is going to be a problem. Wouldn't it be better then to go back into this proposed budget and plug in reasonable expenses that would somewhat reduce the amount?
I did that.
Well, but a lot of these things, Greg, you talked about where you didn't expense anything, you didn't know what the actual money was gonna be for those things. Wouldn't it, I mean, if you're concerned about the amount of the carryover, wouldn't it be better to estimate those expenses now to somewhat cut down the amount of anticipated free carryover, for lack of a better term, if you think that's gonna cause increased spending at the State Department level?
Well, those reserve accounts I talked about are all in Fund 61, dealing with federal projects and some state projects that, you know, we're unsure of. Fund 11 is where that carryover happens. So, you know, you take your state aid, you take your levies, you know, both your levies, and, I can't remember what that total came up to be, I think Fund 11, the revenue's somewhere around, I can't remember, I'm talking my head. That's where they want you to go in and maybe cut. And what I did, because I didn't carry over last year's budget into this year, I run an expense report. While I had my payrolls encumbered, I run an expense report. Well, it didn't really matter about the payroll, because that was brought over to people we know we're gonna hire, that we're gonna have, that we're gonna, you know, have next year. So I didn't have to worry about the payroll side of that. I went through the general expenses, the, you know, miscellaneous stuff, travel, fuel, maintenance supplies, repairs, and I went through those for all of Fund 11, and tried to get it to where, if we weren't using a line item, I cut it, or I cut it down, if I found out what the problem was. You know, some things get coded during the course of a year, instead of, on the custodial side, it'll get put in the maintenance side. So you gotta make sure that you're looking at the right things, but I went through and I tried to, I went through every line, and said, "Okay, well, we can cut this $500, we can cut this $1,000, we can cut this $5,000." So I've done that. I don't think that that carryover amount, in my opinion, I don't think it's, it's more along the lines of $900,000, simply because I already took $200,000 and put in a contingency fund. When I told Sam that, he was a little bit happier with that amount. But, as he said, it's really not 1.1 million, it's 900,000 dollars, which would be less than what we did last, or two years ago. But, I think Birdie did that every year. I think she always put 200,000 dollars in contingency. And I understand what you're saying, I tried to do that. If I were to go further into that, to try to get rid of a lot of that carryover, there would be a lot of money missing whenever people go look at their expense accounts and go look at the budget. You know, the only places you could really take that from would be maintenance and transportation, and I tried to do that over there. So, and I may have to go back and try to do it again.
Is that the kind, are they, did they scrutinize it on the, are they very cautious at the State Department? I mean, like Buck Doughty is getting at here, if they think there's an issue with a certain thing, are they going to bring that to your attention?
Yep, they said they would. And, you know, Sam told me a little bit of how they analyzed that. But, he didn't get into a lot of specifics, but he said, you know, if you cut certain things over 5%, any line items, you know, big line items, like, you know, I keep pulling back the fuel. If those are cut over 5%, then they're going to make a comment. That's why I went ahead and sent that email saying, "Hey, I did this, but, you know, I'm trying to balance the budget. I had to cut something, and we're not going to meet, you know, we had 450,000 dollars in that line item, and I don't think we're going to get there." I could be wrong. Maybe we used a lot of fuel in the last part of May, but over the course of the year, we were, I'm not even sure we hit 400,000. But, I figured that, you know, with part of June and the rest of May, whatever I looked at, we might get up around 415.
Well, maybe my understanding of this was wrong, listening to what you just said. The amount that's being carried over, you're accounting for that money into the 2018 budget, I mean, you're using it.
Yeah, money that we have from this year, that from managing our budgets and managing payrolls and managing personnel, we can save money, and it will get carried over in Fund 11. Fund 61 don't really matter, because that's just money that's given to us, that we have no control over that. We, you know, we're mandated to spend that money that's given to us from Title I and Title II, special ed. They want us to spend it. When you look at the Fund 11 accounts, it's better to not spend that money and save wherever you can, so that you can carry that money over and have that little bit of cushion for the following year.
But, you're using, in your 2018 budget, this 900,000 dollars will be allocated somewhere in the budget at some point, or is already allocated?
Yeah, yeah, it's there. I had my expenses. So, you have your expenses, and then you go back in, I kind of did it backward. I did revenues first, you know, you've got your revenues, so now you know what your expenses are going to be. It has to balance, so what I did is I had, you know, once I put that 200,000 dollars in contingency, I had 1.1 million dollars that was not balanced. So, that's your carryover amount. And I'll let you know more soon enough, find out what they say about that. But, yeah, that money's already in that budget. So, with the amount of money we were receiving next, that we're going to receive next year, our expenses was quite higher. But, as you can see, we had a big carryover last year, so obviously, we didn't spend it all. And I'm going to have to do a projection probably later on this week, to try to figure out what that carryover is going to be. And it's, it can't be real accurate, because you just don't know. You get everything paid. I know that I'm going to get two million, a little over 2 million dollars from the state aid formula in, well, I just got 2 million last week from the Department of Ed, we've got another 2 million, and then we just got to figure out what our expenses are. Our cash has been okay. It dipped under, you know, 2 million dollars one time this year, and I got kind of nervous over that, because you've got to make sure your payrolls are funded until you get your next state aid check or, you know, a nice check from the sheriff's office. But, I think we're going to have a carryover, and I think it will be enough to cover that. And if it's not, we'll just have to adjust. I mean, it's in the budget, we've got money left over from last year, so I think we'll be okay. And when we're not, I'll let you know first thing, when, you know, if I figure that out. But, I think we're okay with that number. I just have to convince Amy Wilk to that.
Okay, next year might be a little bit more difficult, huh?
Difficult or not, it's going to be earlier. It's not going to be May 30th to approve this thing.
As long as it's, okay, anybody have anything else to tell? Okay, Mr. Ellis, thank you. And Mr. King, for your assistance.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, next on our agenda, we've got reports. Joe and I have asked you to get a half the head of you, Mr. Gosney, because they said they have other work to do, so we're going to allow them to do that.
I just want to be clear, Joe and I are going to kind of role model what we're going to be doing for the next couple of years in Lincoln County schools. And we're going to talk to you today about the Leader and Me. And we're going to start by backing up just a little bit, giving you the reason we are at Leader and Me. In November, Mr. McPhiff asked me to represent Lincoln County to go to the ASCD conference in Washington DC. And that was as a result of a request from the State Department. And willingly went to represent our county. And as a part of that, we were to develop a 30, 60, 90 day plan and work with the State Department on leadership and administration. So, I brought ideas back, we set as a curriculum team, and the reason Joe is standing beside me, he is the curriculum assessment technology coordinator, so we worked hand in hand. I have professional development side. So, we batted some ideas around and took it to the curriculum team, and we decided that we would do a collaborative effort and collaborative administration. And we selected a book study. So, we started on that, and that was our 30 day plan. Our 60 day plan, and the 90 day plan was just to get through the book and push it down into the professionals. Now comes Leader and Me. So, fast forward a couple of months, we are contacted by the State Department. And because we have, we were so, we did such a good job with our school improvement money, 61 money, by the way, has to be spent. Just so you know, as we move forward and you hear these numbers, a lot of this money, or all of this money, has to be spent in the next couple of years. So, some of the things that you're going to be hearing and being asked to approve are going to be just, you know, we're in a budget crisis, but then we're going to turn right around and look at doing some things that you're going to say, "Wait a minute, that doesn't really make sense." Well, welcome to federal programs, because we do a lot of things that really don't make sense, it seems like sometimes. But, it is for the good of the students and good for our people. So, fast forward, we get this message that, hey, if you will take time to apply, there's a possibility of Lincoln County receiving your grant, because you guys were so good with your finances through the school improvement process. So, again, with the guidance of the curriculum team, we sit down and we bat around. Do we want to do this, do we want to do that? And at the same time, we're thinking, how do we move forward? And what we determined as a curriculum team, and the two stooges standing in front of you, is that why not do Leader and Me? Let's get it down to the students' level. And we had already had two schools who had expressed a great interest in Leader and Me. Matter of fact, one school had traveled to Florida, and I'd gone with them to a Leader and Me school. And Duval was very excited with Ms. Patton coming on, wanted to do the Leader and Me. So, we take a look at this money, this 260,000 dollars, and we say, "Why don't we just go full-blown Leader and Me in Lincoln County schools, and let's get it out to our kids?" Because that's where the rubber hits the road. One of the things that we continuously discuss is, our kids somehow don't sense the accountability. And we don't recognize the leadership qualities that our kids have. So, by doing leadership and administration, and pushing it down Leader and Me all the way down to our students, we feel that this is not, this is not focusing on assessment for assessment purposes. It's focusing on children, and as they grow and accept that accountability and understand that what their role is, then the achievement piece will take care of itself. And that has been proven time and time again at A.B. Colmes in Raleigh-Durham, and that principal's Muriel Summers. And we are, actually have her lined up to kick off our Leader and Me at our principal's leadership retreat and academy that we have scheduled with part of this money that you all have approved. We're going, Chief Logan, Muriel Summers is going to come in and talk to us about, talk to each of the administrators about what it takes to get this program off and running. So, we've had this, this was actually a three to five-year goal. But, by receiving this grant and being acknowledged and having this money that we have to spend now within two years, it pushed everything up. So, we're moving. And I don't have a fancy handout for you, because this is all, right now, still. I've been chasing emails with Darren Kinley from the Franklin Covey Group. We've been in constant communication the last couple of days. And he talked to me this morning, "What do you want me to do?" And I sent him back, "You take the role, you take the lead, you take the lead." So, we're passing this ball back and forth, and we're looking at training this summer for all of our schools in the Seven Habits. And we'll be using a large portion of larger grant. And I guess I better explain that to you. This 260,000 dollars is coming in two separate grants, a little grant of 16,000 dollars that has to be spent by September 30. And folks, that's why we came to you with the request to send our administrators to an academy and a retreat. And not only are we going to be working with Leader and Me, but we have, one of the things that we're piggybacking on, one of the things that we implemented last year and talked with our teachers about was traumatized children. So, we're going to be bringing in Susan Malane, who is going to work with our administrators, and then she's, Dr. Lowe has contracted with her for another four days to continue that process. So, we're really, really trying to focus on, really get down and focus on our kids.
Use this, and use this program as a nucleus, you know, to something that brings us all together. It's a focal point for all schools, the central office of administration. It's one thing that we can really focus in on and make it great. As you guys are well aware, we've been innovated by initiatives from the state level, federal level, you know, and it seems like there's so many things coming our way. This gives us one centerpiece that will help us to focus, raise something in that we feel is very strong and beneficial for our students.
The positive parts of this program also is that this money, the monies that we use, and Mr. McPhiff, I want to commend Mr. McPhiff, he went out to another county, went to Pluton County, who has Leader and Me implemented in their schools and business of schools. And he came back and he said, "Mr. King, when we do this, this money that we have, we want to make sure that our teachers have all of the materials that they need." Because that was a concern in Pluton County, they weren't receiving all of the materials. They were, they were having to do some of the work. We're going to do the legwork for them, we're going to have those materials, we're going to work with the administrators to schedule their training. And it's, basically, it's, again, it's Steve and Covey, seven principals of highly effective folks, or highly effective, it's highly effective students now, it was highly effective people, and then it was teens and, and it goes on. And this program actually saved Muriel's school. Her school was going to be closed, and she came up with this initiative and started it. It's very near and dear to her heart, and I think that we will be the benefactor of her presentation when she comes to meet with us. And it's going to give us a new perspective. Now, are we still going to, are we going to spend time on the standards and the skills and the curriculum? Yes, yes, yes. But, we're going to focus, we're going to embed that into students being able, when you walk into a school, a student should be able to look you in the eye and say, "Good afternoon, Mr. Priestley. Good afternoon, Mrs. Smith. Welcome to our school. Let me tell you about what good is happening, so you don't have to go to the principal." We want that in Lincoln County schools, we desire that in Lincoln County schools. And through this grant, through this, through this money, and through the efforts of all the folks who are committed, our kids are going to, we believe our kids are really going to, we're going to see a change and a positive change, and the students are going to run with it. The students, and that's what's going to make the change in our county as we look forward. And that's what Leader and Me is all about, is to find and identify those students, the leadership qualities that they have, and have those discussions. And in order for that to happen, we have to train our teachers, and that's going to take a little bit of money. And the first two years, this is a four-year commitment to Franklin Covey. The first two years, this grant will take care of. And our school is, it's unique, because we feel that, like, three of our schools already are well into it. So, it's not like cut off year by year by year. So, potentially, two or three of our schools can get through the entire process in two years. So, that money, we wouldn't have to worry about. And the other thing is, right now, even with the instability of federal programs, we can utilize the Title I, because this is school improvement funds, and that's very much Title I. And I've already talked with Melanie Perky, and we've already talked with the folks at the State Department. So, the county should not incur any cost at all through this whole process. But, man, are we going to reap the benefits, because our kids are going to, I look forward to the day when all of our children can walk out of their school with their head up high and say, "I'm proud of who I am, and I'm proud of where I'm from." That's Leader and Me.
Did you have anything to add?
Mr. King covered most of the bases. Again, I just wanted to reiterate too, that this being something that Mr. King talked about being embedded, this not only brings these traits or these attributes, the principles or habits of highly effective students, but this also brings some consensus or joining together of our curriculum, you know, kind of bringing some commonalities among our schools. And I think that's very important for not only each individual school culture, but also for the overarching culture in the county and all of our schools combined. So, that's a piece that this will bring along.
And we will be providing, as things go along and we get things more solidified with who's getting what, who's getting, because it's all, it's all determined by enrollment and staffing and all those kind of things. When that gets solidified, Darren, I'll be glad to come back and give you presentations of our copies of what's going where and all those kind of things, to make sure that everybody knows what's going on.
And I'm sure principals will hear, the principals report out the LSIC presentations this fall, but that's going to be something that you'll hear over and over since implementation. Principals are super excited, teachers are, you know, the fact that we sent ramps. They're so pleased that this money has been a component to us to fully implement this program, because that's been a piece that's been a challenge for schools that have started that process, have enough money in order to fully implement.
It's pretty expensive, it's about 40,000 dollars per site, just to get started that first year, because that's all the training of the Seven Habits and the curriculum and the materials for all the notebooks and the data information that goes along with that. So, we're going to be able to purchase that, all of that material. It's an exciting time, and I'd like to applaud the curriculum team for, I mean, we really beat our heads against the wall there, butted heads, not maybe beat it against the wall, but butted heads on what to do with this and how to apply for this money. And I would also like to, just in closing, say that we did receive from the State Department that our application was one of the strongest. So, we do, we do some really good things here in Lincoln County. We sure, we sure hear about it when they're not good, so why not put them out there when they are good?
And there was a justification for a phone call from the State Department that I had received at the time, was just because of the work that we've done in the past with some school improvement grants. And this was actually some old money. I told the lady at the time, when she called, well, no, we're interested in this, you know, quarter of a million dollars. We didn't care if it was old or new. If it was an opportunity out there for us to get that kind of thing.
We'd already spent ours, we didn't know where it went, and we're in conflict.
And it cut together so quickly, I mean, it really happened in just a matter of just a few weeks.
And that's why we don't have a hard, hard paper copy too, because I'm still working with the Franklin Covey folks, and we're still trying to get everything scheduled, and we'll get there, we'll get there.
Would you, anyone have anything further? I have just one question.
Yes.
Training sessions, will those occur as a part of the regular employment term or outside of it?
That we have, it'll be outside, and you talked about professional development. We, I have built into the budget of this money, a We, I have built into the budget of this money about $50,000 to pay stipends because some of this will be, will inevitably have to take place in the summer. Now, there will be some, some that will incur, will take place once the school year starts, but the initial training of the habits and working with and getting on the computer, all that kind of thing needs to happen with students not present. And that's what Darren and I are working on is trying to schedule those opportunities right now. And some of our smaller schools, Ranger and West Hamlin are going to be combined. So we're, we're doing everything we can to save every bit of the money so that we can make it, make it last as long as we can.
Good, good. Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Ms. Ron Kersey now will talk to us about flexible technology. We'll find out what that is.
Okay. Well, flexible technology is just pretty much self-explanatory. What this is about, there's a grant through the RUS Distance Learning and Telemedicine Grant. Now, when they talk about flexible, that means the use of technology, using it in various different programs, because technology is so flexible, you're able to adapt it to several different types of programs. And what we're looking at is applying for this grant for $500,000 to increase our distance learning programs within the schools. And what I'm giving you here is just a synopsis of what the Distance Learning and the RUS Grant is and what it takes care of. The first part, it talks about, they're looking at funding with $19 million and they're going to fund 60, 70 awards depending on the amount of awards, with the most being $500,000. This is a matching grant and depending on your status in the poverty line, also depends on what your match is. For us, our match would be $150,000. Now, when I spoke with Polycom, she's explained to me that our match could be included as part of, you know, say we bought the new router or we're getting ready to purchase programs that would enhance the technology for student learning in our schools, we can use that as part of our match. It would just have to be included within the grant as this is what is going to be used as the match for this program. Rural, rural area where it talks about RUS includes areas on your map. That map shows the areas which is called the strike force. Now, President Obama at the time designated certain areas within poverty level and called them strike force zones, saying they were the ones that were the most in need. As you can see, West Virginia is one of them and it's almost completely blue, which means we have them, one of the most counties that are considered in poverty. Yeah, see, well, I did, I made sure that the white space was covered up with my arrow. But Lincoln County qualifies for the maximum points of 15 points towards this competitive grant, which is why they contacted me to complete this grant.
Who was the, who were that?
RUS Distance Learning and Polycom. Yeah, hey, I got the phone call and I was like, okay, this is really cool. So, and a lot of it has to do with, I put my feelers out to find all these different types of grants, whatever it is that works for us. And a lot of times I get contacts, you know, here's another grant. I just applied for a grant for the baseball team to get liked. They asked, I found the grant. Now, whether we get the grant or not, that is, you know, but I will do whatever I can to find these grants. And sometimes I get contacts and this is one of, this is what they did. They called me and said, hey, we have this grant opportunity, this is where we are. They've already done the research on Lincoln County. They knew, you know, how many students were registered and enrolled. They knew what the target, they knew all the stats and they were really interested in putting something together for us. Well, after talking with Jonah and Danny, because Danny just happened to be here that day, we talked about what types of distant learning programs we could implement here in our county. We have AP courses that are already being, you know, implemented into the schools. Through this program, we can do video capability AP courses for students that maybe, you know, or for teachers that aren't able to come to the schools, from institutions that have online classes, we can implement those. We have other distance learning programs that we can implement with video capability through homebound homelessness. I've talked with Kevin in regards to this because students can register two classes and be enrolled part-time. As if being enrolled part-time, that gives us that funding, you know, that's only partial FTE, but it does give us some funding and it helps with our enrollment. If they, of course, if they choose to enroll in the third class as a homebound student, they become full-time and we still get to count them as part of our enrollment. So this is another way we can institute advancing our enrollment. The other area that we spoke about was in regards to snow days. Now, in already Michigan, Minnesota, there's, I'm not going to name all the states, there are nine other states that institute what they call snow day programs. Several counties here in West Virginia do, including Braxton, who calls theirs rain trees. What they do there is they have tablets where the students work on their homework or work on their projects, whatever, a snow day comes along, they have a specific program or they know what they have to do, they go work on it. And even if they do not have internet, they can still work on that because it has been put on their tablet. Once they come back into the school system, the wireless picks it up and it syncs. Teachers know, okay, they checked the OneDrive, all right, you know, here we've got, you know, all these students that have done their work. There is that third option for our instructional snow days. So this is what I've been kind of working on and looking at. I didn't want to do too much, but I know that in order to have programs implemented in here, we need your approval. The grant is, has to be implemented, or has to be, that word is in my head, it has to be completed and submitted by the 14th. And when they contacted me, it did not give me much time. I spoke with Jeff and Bill and said, you know, this is where we're at, what, what should I do? So here I am, I'm explaining to you what we can do.
Have you already done a lot of the preparation work for this?
Yes. I have spoke to them, I will be on another conference call tomorrow regarding this and they, all I have to do is send them information, what we have, what we want and where we're going to be at for what we need and they will put it all in the grant for me. So it's, that's easy, that's kind of taken the pressure off since we just finished writing a quarter of a million grant for a five-year period, which is $1.2 million, you know, depending on, as we talked about earlier, the budgets, if they're approved or not. So it kind of took a little bit of pressure off.
You know, what things might just load about this opportunity regarding the deal that was recently passed and signed into law by the government, I can't think of a deal more, that if we've got homeschool students out there.
Yes.
Taking courses online through the school system, we can get a full FTE for those students, though even though they're homeschooled.
Yes.
We still would get funding for them, this is if they were here with us.
And we can also count them as part of our federal enrollment. If, for example, you know, we have a grant, are looking at another grant and they're wanting to know what total enrollment of those students are, we can count those students that are even being homeschooled, but that they're enrolled, we can count them as part of that enrollment towards that grant. And those numbers help, but they help in several ways. So that, that was one of the pieces that really kind of helped say, ooh, this would be really cool for us to do. As far as the homebound, you know, I even spoke with Ashley Arvott in regards to this as she is our homebound teacher. You know, there are times when she has several and has to get out and has to schedule and by offering video capabilities, some of those homebound students can Skype with the teacher in the classroom and they can basically attend the class from home and that will free Ashley to go somewhere else. So there are many advantages to adding a distance learning program in rural areas such as ours. So that's kind of what intrigued me to push forward with this grant. So now it's up to you guys, you know, if this is something that we want, I will push forward. If this is something you don't want, you know, okay, when I talk to Mark and say, Ted, the board said no.
Mr. McHiff, you.
I recommend that we move forward on this with just this one note, that we do have the capability of using our E-Rate funding as our income match, but there'd be no cost to the board.
I agree. And this is one of the things that she spoke about was using, was using the E-Rate funding as part of the match because it was, it coincides with the distance learning part of the grant.
What would be the downside of doing that?
Any? There wouldn't be if we're not out here, you know, of our own money to support it. Like I said, it's got, there's tremendous possibilities and again, that homeschool piece with this passage of this deal as well, there's an opportunity there, we could even gain financial.
Yes.
By getting this grant. I think it's a great opportunity.
Now, one of the things we looked at though is when, I'm pointing to Jonah, he's already gone, the tablets that they're looking at using are about $150 apiece. So to start this program out, we got together and crunched some numbers, it would be more beneficial to start out maybe the sixth through 12th grade on most, on this area because we would be able to give them or purchase one-to-one tablets.
How many tablets were you thinking of here?
The way I'm looking at it, I was, you know, kind of going through and crossing off and looking at the enrollment, we had 3540 this year. The last enrollment was 3,540, that was the last numbers I had. And once you deduct the K through, or the pre-K through five, it puts us down to about 16, 5, 6, almost 17. So at that, we're talking approximately maybe 100, 350,000.
Are you saying that all the 6212 students would receive a tablet?
Yes.
And you could restrict what.
Yes.
Flight they can get on?
Yes. There are all kinds of controls that can be put on these tablets. Several other counties do have a one-to-one. With, see, I don't have Jonah here to talk about the tablets, but the, you can lock, you can also track these tablets. Let me give you an example. My son in Virgin, when we were in Virginia, a tablet, or actually it's called the Laptop Initiative, was instituted his first year. Okay, so you know, everybody got, all the students got a laptop within this school system. We had one student who moved to New Jersey and tried taking the tablet with them, but the GPS locator located it, the cops went and got the tablet and mailed it back to us. So, you know, but you, but there is that capability. No charges were filed and it was just, well, it was one of, just one of those things, you know. But there are restrictions. We can, you know, just like we have the firewalls here, we can still, we can place those same firewalls on those tablets because they will all be image as if they were here.
That was one of the earlier, my thoughts earlier about the necessity of having a tablet at home, many probably couldn't afford that or might not have them.
Right.
And this would be provided for them. And even though they wouldn't have internet at home, once they got to school, it could be picked up.
Yeah, it syncs it right up and whatever they have done loads and if by some chance they were able to slip by something, it'll load too. And that way, and then we can say, hey, you know, you've lost your, it goes right along with the acceptable use policy. Whatever they do here at the schools will still apply at home because these tablets are school property.
But many, I mean, a lot of, the majority of students probably aren't going to be homebound or homeschool or any of these categories here. But then can any classroom teacher utilize this for things they want to do outside of class?
Yes.
That's a snow day kind of aspect.
Yes, that's one of my, that was fact, that was the first thing I thought of, was the snow day aspect. As well as, the other really cool thing about this is, and I didn't put it in here, is there are classrooms across the country that pair up and do projects together, you know, maybe they want to compare the climate here to what's going on in California. You know, like Orville Dam right now is under watch because one of the spillways has leaked and there's been 1,800 people evacuated. Well, how does that compare up here? We had the Buffalo Creek disaster, you know, where the dam gave away. So there is that comparison and the students can work together in a Skyping situation and they can help learn from each other. Goes along with the Leader and Me, which when they were introduced and I'm thinking, oh my gosh, see how well these will go together. I mean, it's as, those programs were made to work together because you've got students that have been showing leadership, taking ownership of what they're doing and the more that they can work with technology, because that's where our country is going, the more capable they're going to be out in the workforce.
Okay, by any means. All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Last, certainly, Mr. Goddard, maintenance update.
Now, I feel like, Ray makes me feel like I'm a little lighter on funding. Just, I'll sit here at the computer for a few minutes here just to, I want to go over a little bit on the football field, some areas that we've had and things that we've had to address already. And then some recommended ideas to run into here with this, if we were to look at. Well, the first thing was that we ran into, when we got out there, we started going through all this and saying the great states out and doing different things we need to do to get great properly. Come to find out, the benchmarks and all the other grading had been graded off, so they were gone. We had a company come in last week and resurveyed it back to 2015 when they originally set the benchmarks and your points on it for the drawing, for the go-by to the field. So we got all that stuff back. Possibly it was done when we had volunteers coming in to move a lot of dirt for us, so we've got all that set back and all our levels marked where we have to put some dirt and the things. So we're good to go on that. We're about 11 days, we have 11 rain days already. We're about two weeks behind schedule right now. Hoping if we get good weather, possibly catch up. We're at least two weeks behind right now, we need to be. One of the things that was brought up, and I'm going to try and show you as best I can, the contour of the backside, which would be the visitor side, when it's all said and done, where we want to put the bleachers back. The hillside coming in here comes almost right in the back of where you have your bleacher system and your track field. The concern that's brought up in our first instruction meeting that Mr. Saros was at and his Mary Doe was at, was the hillside, where the hillside is so close there, it's breaking in and would fill up and eventually would flood over everything on the track field and bleachers. One of the proposals I'm going to present to you was that to do the contour work now, we do the contour work now to prevent this from further down the road, would be ideal to keep this, when we put the track in, once we put the track in there, when you get to the next phase on the track, if you have to go back in or dozer because it's so close to the hill, wait a second. If you have to go back in or dozer, because it's so close to the hill, where this field is now. It starts out at an angle where you come across and the field kind of sets, kind of goes this way. So it's real close on the road to this side. And then the hillside, on the hillside, about middle ways is almost against the hillside. So to get equipment in there later on would be, you're going to do tremendous damage to get in there to address some of this. Just to show you a couple, let me make it a little bit easier. What you're looking at, this is the area here, not too concerned about that. That's pretty flat. But what they've done in their drawings is they're draining everything. Instead of, I thought, you know, when you drain something, it calls the sides of it. We would have started in the middle and drained both sides. What they're doing is starting their drain middle ways and draining all the way towards Route Three, so. This is kind of the middle ways. This is the area that we're talking about here that, if you can see where it's eroded down already. If that continues to do that, once we're done, down the road, you're going to eventually fill in and all that water then will come out of there. So if you, if you do some preventive types of things right now, down the road, you will take, it will be better off for that. That's, this is pretty much, it starts here, where they start is right in this area here and then they're draining it this way. The natural drain is this way. So that's, that's a big concern in how that drain was set up. Now whether or not that was calculated in or just happened after all the dirt was moved originally.
Greg, how far back on that hill there is the board's probably going to go?
Uh, we have a right-of-way. I'll show you on the map. There's a gas right-of-way that goes around the side of, we own towards the top of the hill.
Okay, so I mean, what you're potentially talking about cutting out more?
Yeah, we're, that's our fault. And this is the area that I'm talking about where the rock, all this rock and this, this area that's in here. Right now, they're digging out all this rock to try and get it to start to slug here. This is the, this is back, it starts back here where your drain is supposed to start, go this way. The idea was to start the center and drain it this way and drain it this way, drain it back towards the pond and drain it back towards the pond. Currently, the way it's set up, if we go this way with the drain and this comes down and blocks off that drain, where's the water going down? It's going to come this way. And then, once you get it completed, it's going to be a whole lot, it's going to be level, more level. Because you're at one percent grade, it's actually hard to track when you get down to track here on that pond. So that's a little bit about it. Maybe, you know, what you're talking about, I'll show you on the... You see the road here? This is the road that's coming up that we have to provide the right-of-way for, the gas company. So, and it goes, we go to the top, or we're kind of at the top of this hill over here. But what we're, what the proposal is, and we don't have to do it now, we can wait and see if something happens. If nothing happens, I'm just, just feel like I need to tell you ahead of time that if it does happen, what we've done could be totally damaged. So, just, one of the proposals, and it would have to be a change order if we put it into a change, change order, so. The contour, what he's getting on his contour proposal. And it's, it was five thousand dollars to do the changes on that.
Five thousand dollars for this particular change order? Is that right here?
How much?
Five thousand.
That's it. Five thousand. Now, that, that will be done. Now, the other thing was to put up, this is an alternative, after we do, we were to do that. The erosion to prevent, you know, I think everybody's seen where you put up the black, black fence and things like that. Where afterwards done, we'll put up the, rather to stop any erosion coming down into it. That was forty-two hundred for the erosion. Again, you're looking at about almost ten thousand dollars.
So there's two separate change orders?
Yes, there'll be two separate change orders for it. It's not something we have to do right now. If you want to do it, that would be a time to do it, but we could wait. And down the road, if we never have anything come down off that hill, everything will be good. But if it happens to, closes off that ditch that's going to be made there, then everything's going to come out of that field.
Will it include any extra seed?
This, this will not, on this part, yeah, it'll seed all that hillside. Once it's concurded, it'll be out of seed and everything.
How much contouring are we talking about? Go back, if you can, go back to one of the pictures you have of that hill and give us an idea of how far back he's taken. And is it going to be staged? I mean, different levels or it just going to be slowed?
I don't know if I can really show you good, I'll pull up another picture. He's planning on taking it all the way over here, starting this way and taking the contour all the way around.
To the tree line?
Yes, to the, that's the line goes down to the pond. We're going to contour it towards the pond in the center and contour it on the other side.
Because that really banks toward the pond, right?
Yes, yes, it's a natural bank, it's toward the pond.
How steep is it? Well, no, what I'm asking is, when you, if you look like on highway projects, when you have problems with debris falling off the mountains. A lot of times, they'll have shelves. They'll build benches.
Yes, that's what he'll do. He'll bench and then contour this stance.
So that there'll be a bench behind our field track. There'll be a bench to catch any debris and he'll contour it all to control runoff. And the benches is a basic, a secondary safety measure. The contouring should control it. But there'll be a bench in case stuff does come off, you can get equipment in there to clean anything.
That's the key. That's my, my total concern right now. I've thought about that, that just happens, it happens. But getting in there after the, and not doing, pairing up everything. And so we moved into the second phase and we get our, our track building there and starting to get the bleachers. Then we have something happens and you have to take the bleachers all out, bring equipment across the back and you want to throw that pride off.
Well, I mean, to me, it's very important to make sure, and you probably already know this, we wouldn't represent it. But I didn't get a lot of time to look for proposals. It's very important to me that if we do this, not only is he doing the contouring work to prevent this from happening. But also putting in an area that we can go in and clean it out without damaging our track, bleachers, et cetera, in case it does. Because even with the best engineering, the best laid plans, my cement office will go right. And, I mean, that for us, ninety, whatever hundred dollars that was, is a lot of money to spend.
Right.
And I want to make sure that that is spent as best we can. So if there is a problem, we can go in and clean it out. Because you're dealing with Mother Nature. You changed what God created and you were putting it in a different format. And when you do that and it rains, you never know what's going to happen.
And we've got, and the one thing that's got me is a... Not so much in this area, it's back in the area that we have the rock. That was blasted at one time years ago. That's how the rock blew that bit back in there.
That looks like almost a natural point that comes down there.
And the rock comes in, my concern, like you were talking, we get back in there, we do it, what's going to keep that rock from coming down? That would, there would be no way I would agree to it without a bench, a bench there and a clean off. I consider it a good point. We're doing it for prevention, we're not doing it for duty.
Right.
Once we, we'll put the grass on law. But our ultimate goal is to keep, is to keep low maintenance on this and keep the facilities. And not have to go in every time and kill new facilities. I'll give you copies of all the...
Do you bring still, sort of, the monies in the, still available?
Yes, we still have monies available. We do have the project with one seventy-three. We still have monies available. Still fencing issue that I, I need to get to, I'm a little too blind on that.
Has Brian mentioned any other potential changes he might see at this time?
Nothing, that, these were the key concerns that he, that he brought to the construction. There was no other ones. Everything else was, we don't foresee anything.
Greg, is this the meeting that the track, that you attended and everything's good with the drains? You had a big question about, you know?
We, we had the meeting and the question, and we explained to them that the next phase on the track, it will have that, that trough that will be put around it. You've got a one percent grade on the actual track. It will drain into a trough and then down into the actual ground. You seemed pretty comfortable with it at that point. We did, we were extensively explaining how the drainage was to work and... I think one of the things you got to look at the track, you're looking at in this, and we explained to them the drawings are a little bit misleading when you're looking at the track. When you look at the track, what the track is, it's showing a finished product here. Now, what's going to actually be there when the football field is done? The track's going to be there, but it's going to be grass. But you're going to have some excavation that will go on to the next phase where you're going to take that down. Below that, and then the finished product is going to be the rubberized surface. So you're going to have some feeling here. And the finished product will be what you actually look at. What he's going to be looking at now, and the one percent slope here, that's the finished slope. That's not going to be the slope right now. Once it, once you get your build up and you get your rubberized surface on there. You don't have a one percent slope on there. Around this edge is what I'm talking about. There's a trough that goes in here. And that's, that's the phase of the track. There's a trough to catch the water. And the water then would drain into these areas here and then this area here. The concern that he had also was the, was his pit. This, this terrain is torture lowest point. And he had his, the pit that he's going to have these high jumps and all that. It was going to be on one end or the other. And he looked at it and it's, explained, though, seemed pretty comfortable, understanding, I think, excited about the next phase. He's got some, he's, he's, he's working on it.
Greg, do you mean, everybody, now, you said what's being done now would be a grass surface all over, right? Now, will this trough that you referred to, is that going to be there now or is that going to be only eventually?
It will be part of the actual track. The trough will go in underneath this rubber, I don't think the last thing that's put in under the rubberized roof here. Track here. And you're going to put a, the trough will be in there then to drain it. It's kind, it's like a two-inch thing that goes around it. It's got holes in it where it drains out. You don't have it all sweeping down.
Okay, I'm kind of a realist. Assuming prior to a rubberized track and assuming that you'd go with an old-fashioned painted track.
Right.
Would that, would water be a concern there?
It's still going to be set for the elevation. See your elevations here? It's still going to be set for your elevation. It's just that you're going to have a higher, once you're finished elevation, it's actually going to be a little bit higher.
So if it's just a grass track for a while?
It's going to be a one percent, it's still, it's outside to the inside. It's, it's designed, even with the grass, it will be designed to drain in this area, right out there here.
Love to see enough of the rubberizers, whatever kind of type that they do.
It will be ready to, as far as, you know, where that, it'll be a grass area that can paint and run.
Which one of you, until money's become available, will take the next step? So Greg, do you feel like the amounts that have been proposed for the two change orders are good value for our money?
I'm a little disappointed in the, in the five thousand dollar proposal. I thought that was going to be a little bit lower seeing our equipment's already on the, on the property.
Is that negotiable, that number?
Talk about that once, you know, in one direction, one direction. I'm thinking more like three. Looking already there, I don't know. Doesn't hurt to ask, I've heard overboard. Every money we save is what I look at down the road. We just bet on something else.
If I have any further questions about this particular, these two change orders? To me, it's like no brainer. You might like to build something and you want to tear it up, I think you can afford to do it. Hopefully, the less of rock.
Yeah, I'd say we'd love to agree. Now's time to do it. We, I think it's a good deal. Now's time to do it. I have asked, I have asked, it hasn't come in. I may have to do something different. I have asked for a quote for irrigation. Whether or not we get to the point, before we go on top of, according to how that comes in. I just really feel like that we get into July, it's really dry. We're going to do irrigation here to express the... So I'm looking, I'm exploring that too to see what our options are there.
Just checking to see anything.
I mean, we can, we can, we can put the best grass in the world out there, but if we don't have water and sun, it's going to dry. That's my concern. I don't want to have, when it comes to July, we're done, I don't want to have just a dry air field there, the wind blowing. I like to get something in there. And you know, even if we have to, I'd like to get an irrigation just what we're doing. Get something we, maybe you could pipe away, maybe something we can do. I don't know. We'll see. Then you come in and do the finish once we do it. But I'm looking at West Virginia Water. We actually have the, we actually have the, we have this over here. Where the road comes around in this area here, this asphalt area here, there's, there's a four-inch water line that comes through there. What I'm looking at right now is taking and putting across here in this area that we're going to be, the football area. I was putting five hydrants there. And to have a means of getting water before we decide to do that. So those are some other things I'm looking at. But I was, I just really feel like if that, this next phase is, before we get to July, I'd like to have it. I'd like to come August and have a nice green patch in there.
Let me ask this, Greg, and this may be totally not feasible, because eventually we would need drinking water at the facility anyway.
That's my part of it, yes.
But as far as cost to irrigate, I mean, if you're talking about potentially putting in underground piping to irrigate. If that isn't feasible, or even if it is, would it be something that might be more economical to pump water from the river?
From the lake with the pond.
With the pond. I thought about the pond, but that gets into all kinds of other, because I, how much water would that pond hold? I mean, the area we had to irrigate, probably drain it in one or two irrigations, wouldn't it?
Yeah, drain it, yes.
Man, that was my first thought. And then I, then I went back to the river, down another distance. And I don't know what a pump, that would be capable of doing that would cost.
What are we going to spend and all that? I'm pumping water up and maintaining that, that's it.
Right. I mean, it may be that using city water is, is the best alternative.
What I'm looking at nighttime is, do you water it? I'm putting all this time, I'm running system. It's got nighttime water for an hour and a night.
I don't think you can use your own water. I think there's some kind of...
There's some kind of...
There's a rule of decision. I wanted to do that at some field in Logan, and I was told to pump water out of the river.
It's a bacteria thing.
Now that you brought it up, Greg. Sorry.
Can't use acres to pay. Just tell us... Just tell us, Larry, which is better for irrigation, all this treated chemicalized city water or natural old mud river water?
I don't think a gellery is gonna hurt, hurt the grass. We do need to have it on time or those, if we would flip.
Definitely on time, yes. And I think, what I, my, my thought is if we already, if we move the water over to the side, we're gonna need it eventually. We'll put our locker rooms, our concession stands, all the things that's, uh, will come forth here, it's always there, I mean, you know. It's the one time, but if you wanna have to do it sometime, you know, down around the end line, so, see, we'll get it there and, uh, yeah, we'll just see where it comes, I mean, that's just something I'm working on right now, so I'll, I just want you to be aware of that.
Are, are you thinking about above-ground sprinklers that would be removable or underground piping?
I'm thinking, what, what I'm looking at, you're, you're, in the field itself will be a system of underground piping. And you'll have the pump up here, whether you wanna put anything, put it on. Water itself and then on this, kinda on this, whatever side, I'm looking at this side of it. Somewhere in here will be your, or temporary, temporary for us will be our system, but it'll be under, in a vault underground. We put in to have your timer type system set up where it's just a matter of. And we could put a little underground water hole like there, it's, we'll live on.
Okay, Greg.
I think the perception is when we get down, everybody thinks we're gonna have a big huge field, I think we can do that. And then the goalposts, I, I've talked to Mr. Nickip also, I said, uh, when we sit down, we get grassed over, we'll paint and do all kinds of stuff. We're gonna have our goalposts set up and everything, that's, hopefully my fault.
Be nice to get somebody that'll make that.
I've suggested it twice, I've done the best I can.
Actually, they're in the, they're in the, they're in the deal.
All included this project.
They're included in this, are they included on this project?
We'll take Ray after I give him the first field company.
You'll be waiting a while.
We'll move it to their close.
There's still be waiting a while.
Let Sean have it.
Wrong ball.
Okay. Anybody have anything other than football?
We'll throw in one, if you like, if we could arrange somehow, pass some nutrients, a little water, uh, we'll have some trace elements in it, proper fertilizer. I know that's gonna be expensive, but sure enhance the.
I think it would be easier to look at that, especially starting out, and that, the other thing is when your first, when you start cutting this grass, your first, your first cuts have to be really right. Or you can burn that grass right up and you just, you just got a dead field there. All right. One more thing I need to talk to you about, this is, uh, we've been going around and around, it's pretty close to all year. And, uh, I really, at this point, Zim was supposed to have me some information and they didn't, so we have talked back and forth with them. Issue that we have at Duval, which we've been monitoring, we had a water leak earlier in the year, a bad water leak underneath, we couldn't get to it. And underneath it, I think it's washed out over a period, but this is something that's been ongoing for years. The water leak had may have been there for years, but I know that the one hot, water tank, the huge water tank that's in the kitchen area would never shut off. The water tank kicked on right all the time, I'm like, that's just not right. Oh, or I think that's, I should be kicking off, so all the time they burn up. When I came in, there was already a hot water tank being replaced, and we replaced another one, same area, so something has been going on here for quite a while. And what I found out was in the concrete in the kitchen area by the Duval, there's three sections that were built on the Duval later on. And there was three different sections by, in the, finding out, with the blueprint. But that section there, we could hear water, but we could not get to it, it was on the ground, we tried every way in the world to get under it. So I think the actual lines are in the concrete, and that's where we've had a water leak there. So in the process, we rerouted the water off all of overhead in the ceilings, we done away with all the water underneath there, we done that back. Probably October, we've done all that. So I had, uh, the office facilities from, uh, State Department come in, Mike Pickens and, uh, he's sent some people down here. I've talked to Mike about some situations here. They investigated it and they, based on their investigation, and they wanted us to contact the civil engineer, which in the process we contacted them, there you go. Three different people come down, look at this over a period, trying to figure out what's, what's going on. What we ended up, uh, what their findings were, that the building itself, those three buildings itself, you have piers and columns. You know, I'll go show you some pictures where the floor broke away, and some different things that has happened. The, the floor itself is a slab floor, the floor inside. Well, the sample was the piers that hold the building up were built on the outside, the piers on the outside. So the actual floor inside was just some field dirt that was put in and then they just poured slab. So the feeling was that some of these, uh, interior walls that were laid on that slab, this floor is cracked really bad and settled, real bad. My concern was the building, and is the building safe and all this, and I was assured by Zim and everyone that the building was safe. So we just kind of been monitoring everything for options worth. So in doing so, we, uh, we're waiting on the fix that they're recommending, the walls, the outside walls to the building. And if you're familiar over the years, what happened with Hamlin back in two thousand and six, ended up, the walls on that building was actually falling down. So what we've done on that building was we put four cables, two in the lower part, two in the upper part, to hold the building back together, to hold the outside walls. Basically, that's what they're recommending, our primary concern is tying these walls back together to the building. Because they were never tied to the building to start, but the upstairs floor was a concern, Mike, that a three-inch gap, that it pulled away from the wall. So we've put, there's just, was put these big huge angles in the floor, bolted both the walls there. I'm looking, and I didn't agree with that, so they're looking, redesigning this somewhat, is, well, that's a print hazard, you can't do that with kids in school. You can't put a big, huge angle and bolts in the middle of the floor, bolt together. So they've gone back and ensured me that, that I would have had this information for this meeting, but I'm interested, I showed us all weekend, sending emails back and forth too. Just to show you a little bit of, uh, what's going on. See that well. This is looking back, looking back from the kitchen area, the cafeteria. If you see this area here, and, and over the years, can't keep a tile, it keeps cracking a tile, you can see how this has dropped down, uh, quite a bit through this area here. And you have some cracks over here in this area. Now, the door, going out the door, the front door going out towards, uh, towards the road. You can see this area here, I've got a two and a half inch gap here where this has dropped down, where the building itself has dropped down. Also, the door that holds, where we shut the center post for your door, we've had to shim that up about an inch and a half to hold the post, so it can stay in there. These are all areas that I was concerned with were brought down. If you see in the actual eating area that's here, this wall here was poured on top of that slab. So what, uh, what's happened is, if you see up at the ceiling, you got a four-inch drop, that wall has dropped down four inches from that sill. This door here, we've had to cut two inches off that door to get the door open. This is the one that most concerned, they're concerned with the most, so all that was a concern. My biggest concern and why I started calling all these people in, the walls, we had to foam that up and then fill it with some concrete. If you look at the foam in here, you've got about two and a half inches of foam to three inches in some places. My concern and my initial looking at it was, walls were really bad, walls were coming down. That, that was a huge concern about the safety of our students and of our, uh, our faculty that's working in there. And I was assured, Zim, when they came in here and down there, I have a letter from them stating that, and they come in that, uh, everything was safe, so. I don't know if you can see this, this is where it broke away from, uh, from the walls here, it's actually the, there's, there's the gap I was talking about. If you, if you look at it, the mirror is down towards the end and then gets wider and then, so that's, that's about two and a half inches of concrete that we put in there to, to seal up the crack. I'm, I was concerned with this area here and the stairwell, this is the stairwell going up to it. All of this was fresh cracks, these were nothing from the previous years or anything. And you've got, if you, I can't see it real well because picture, the picture here itself, you've got a good three-quarter and over here almost a one-inch crack. They were not too concerned with that, they were saying that that was just cosmetic. There are some markers, we can put, I wanted to put markers in there, uh, we got devices you can put in there to, to, um, monitor that and then see if we're still having some shifting or movement in that area.
Usually when the, uh, cracks are along the, the block itself, they generally consider that safe, right? When the cracks are through the block, that's when you go.
Breaking, breaking all the way down. There's something, to my, to my, I think, something's happening across this block, across. They're saying that where it was poured on slab, that the actual slab is, not the building, the slab inside is what's, what's coming apart.
Seventy-five feet down to the, uh, bedrock in that area.
We, I, I got.
And it's just mucked down below there.
That's actually what's, what happened, well, we looked at it and I went back to all the blueprints years ago, they act, actually hit bedrock where the piers are set on. They hit bedrock at, I think it was thirty-two feet.
Oh, that's, uh, the seventy-five.
Now, that's just, that's just where they set the piers.
Yeah.
They didn't do anything in the center, the center is what, seven?
They, they had cotton, kind of a crisis when they go on the east end. Uh, they planned to just pour slab, uh, that's my expression, or, and then at the last minute, they had a change order and they, uh, had to actually, uh, drill, uh, and pour, I think it was, I think they went down seventy-five feet and poured the concrete in those.
I saw that in the, in the blueprints years ago, back in, uh, there's three different editions, one of them was done in nineteen-seventy. And then there was another edition back in the sixties, and then seven.
On the west end.
Yes. And that was, uh, I saw where they had drilled and done, uh, poured the concrete down in there. Again, the biggest concern that they have and, uh, that, uh, is to tie the walls together. That's, that's our primary concern right now, is tying these walls together and then monitoring, uh, see what's happening. There's companies that you can call to come in and, uh, but this is broken in so many places, they're out there. I really think that's not feasible to do this, we're gonna wait, they're coming up with some prices course and, uh, some proposals. And there's nothing to say we can't get some independent people to come in, look, it's also, uh, but that's the proposals, I want to roll right again, uh, as our fix. But Marco Concrete, they do hydraulic lifting, and he's saying they've actually drilled holes in it, pumped, uh, that's kind of like an epoxy type deal, which will pull the concrete out. I don't know if that will be feasible to this, to the cause of the extent of it. The feasibility may be if we continue to keep the building open, to, uh, take section of it and, and remove the concrete, stabilize the soil and that sort of. That's something, but the primary concern is tying these walls together, coming up with some fix to tie the walls together. That's the biggest concern, mine is safety.
Greg, and I've discussed this, it's possible that depending upon what we find out as far as the costs involved, this may end up being our needs project, right, the next fall?
Yes, that's what I'm going after, took it very well to a couple of, I mean, it is.
So yeah, maybe come in early.
It's just, uh, the older building, it's like that.
Have you seen any changes in the east end of the building, where they hit all of that, uh, free lemonade?
Actually, I ran into something the other night, it was kind of disturbing, the, on the, uh, the very far, uh, corner on this, like towards, uh, you know where they come around the curb, where the actual modular was left there, and that corner, I was up there running wire and, uh, there was a hole on that dig and it broke a whole section. It was getting up the sill and I didn't see it before, and that one, the whole corner broke off now.
They're out next to the modulars, they're, I'm talking about the far east.
Haven't had any, any issues up there.
I don't see how that could possibly be.
That, that's probably the most stable part of the building.
It would have to be.
It, it's, it's the west side that's actually the, uh.
Put concrete in there for days.
You can tell that floor in there, that floor is perfect. Again, what the recommendation is at this time, none of the facilities that have been other than the report are causing me any concern. Although I would recommend that the slabs, wall bricks be preserved in a timely manner. And they consider the cosmetic, or the concrete slab issues are more cosmetic than anything else, and, uh, I did go on and ask for a recommended repair and cost.
Do you share that wisdom?
I just, uh, there's some summer projects that is for your, uh, football, we'll be working on some this summer. We have new food service, uh, provided its own storage room for, uh, eliminating that storage problem when we get a lot of food in. Moving the freezer to the core, back here, a section back here. We're, we're actually tore down the walls, we built a wall, we're ready to start moving the freezer and, uh, and place some, uh, concrete there. West Hamlin, we're going through all the air units, we're gonna clean them and check them. And what I mean by check them, we're gonna clean the coals, we bought some things I have, that we're going to, uh, blow out all the coals and check all the actuators. What we ran into throughout this year, it seemed like I was playing catch-up all year, is that we had a ton of actuators on Johnson Controls. They have these real, they're really different, they're not a Blammo type system that's, or the better systems out there that, uh, that will open out there, your air. They're good with control and all that. They were just cheap, really cheap, and gears are chewed up and they weren't working at all. So we're gonna go through West Hamlin, clean all the coals and check all the actuators, replace the ones that needed. Hamlin Middle and Elementary School, we're gonna clean all the air units there, also blow out all the coals and, and check and clean all the, uh, actuators there. G-Vol, uh, Gun Valley Football Locker Room, we're gonna install a new roof and siding on that building. Uh, Mike Stallings is gonna replace and repair the wall, uh, to accommodate for, and we've been actually working on that some the last, uh, started on last week. Repairing the concrete out and spraying it, and that up there. Also, the sidewalk, uh, the, uh, about the gym area by Gun Valley, if you've been up there, we have a sinkhole that's happening there. And I think it's because of the water from the roof that's been draining down there for years. So we, we've got some concrete that has dropped, uh, we're gonna tear all that out and replace all that and inspect what we need to do. We have a, a pretty bad drop there, oh, we don't do to fix that. Uh, window air conditioner, we finished Gun Valley, we started this about a month ago. We're gonna run, we're taking all the window air condition completely out of the, uh, their housing and taking on it and cleaning them with water and cleaning them out real good. And, uh, helps the units, it makes the, less likelihood of, uh, some, you know, bad smells and stuff like that. At midway, we've got a whole modular, the modular when you first come in, the main gateway, all the siding on that is brought it off. We've had to order some special nine foot, uh, T eleven siding to put on there. But we're going to replace, we have to replace the whole side of that. Also, electric panel box in Midway, we're going to look at it, somehow, we got a hundred amp panel box that's upstairs. And we had issues all year long, kicking breakers and things, and somebody had actually taken out a panel box and gutted it and put a replacement in there. It really shouldn't have been done that much, so we're going to fix that. Looking at running electric and water across the road where they've established the new wind tunnels at the high school. Trying to get something over there, we may put something in there like, uh, the electric, it'll be something like you see in a, uh, campground where they can walk into it. Lincoln County High School, we went through with border risks and different things, the boards and inspections that we had. We addressed some issues that they found and rose up for them and, uh, we fixed that. And in the process, I found some other things that need to be done, rebuilding valves and, uh, regulators, these are all, uh, I mean, about the park for a work is that. We're looking at cutting, starting this year, we're, I'm looking at things a little differently. We're going to start cutting our filters for all the schools, I want to cut a year's supply this summer. So when we do get busy during the year, we won't have to take the time out to cut filters. So we're going to cut the filters and go on and size them, and, uh, I have done spreadsheets on all the schools. Every school has its own spreadsheet of what filters it takes for the unit, what belts it takes for the unit, all those things now, and we'll make this pull out through. We have a laminated sheet, they pull out the laminated sheets from school and you see what they're actually going to do. We're going to run the power from the generator that's here, usually our power outage is one of the things that's happening here is that, every time we drop away, I think, three weeks, we had three weeks that we didn't have power, we didn't have power for three weeks. Every week seemed like something was happening. At least in the past three weeks, we have had issues with power being out, big as part of the dice. So what we're going to do is generate over here to our data rack, we've already got, uh, the server backed out to where we'll have internet connection throughout the buildings. And look at putting some, uh, a couple of LED lights in to light up rooms so that, uh, they won't totally shut us down like in the past.
Any other questions about any other projects or? Okay, thank you, Mr. Goddard.
Folks like to come back on.
Just don't turn that back.
We'll leave it up, leave it up down for a little bit.
Okay, that takes care of all the reports we had today. Randy's got to stand up for a back person. Let's take a minute here, ladies and gentlemen.